I'm on the Jasper County side of Sunset.
But I was living down.
Good afternoon to everyone. Now I'm going to call this Jasper County Planning Commission meeting to order. Dr. Boss, who you would lead us in our implication and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord God, as again and another time, Lord, that we come before your presence, Lord, thanking you for all your many blessings, Lord. We thank you for this time of year where we celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. Lord, we just give you all the praise and all the glory. We ask that you would be with us through this meeting, oh Lord, that may we do and say those things that are pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Dr. Boss for leading us in implication and pledge allegiance at this time. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this afternoon.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Dr. Butler. Ready for questions?
Questions.
Hand none. All in favor of such motion, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carry unanimously. The next thing on our agenda, if you'd like to welcome our two members, I'll start on hand. You can get up and introduce yourself and have any comments you can do at this time.
My name's Lee Gramlin. I live right here in Grahamville in Jasper County. I've been down in this area about ten years. I worked for Santee Cooper as a lineman for eight years. I currently work for Southeastern Lemon Tree as an operations manager over there. And I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to come here and thank you.
Line with the Santee Cooper.
Yes, sir.
Brent Robinson, I'm an architect. We live out there on Old Island on Boy Creek. We've been in the Low Countries since 2009 and finally get to, I'm a civic type person. We reach out. We coach sports and sit on a couple boards. So happy to try to get ahead of this Jasper County growth, this tier income.
Yes, also we'd like to welcome you to this commission and we like working with you. We a little unique, but we just like a little family.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes we disagree on things, but that's the only way you can get the job done. Everybody can't seem the same way all the time. We welcome you here this evening. Or any of you other commission like to send anything to our new members at this time?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Come to find out, he's practically my neighbor.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the September 12th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jenkins make a motion that we receive a minutes from the last meeting and I think work by section if there's any correction.
A motion by Mr. Jenkins to approve the September 12th, 23 minutes, second by Dr. Butler. Ready for question?
Questions.
All in favor of such motion, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda this evening is a zoning map amendment, industrial development tax map number 06700-01-003. We'll ask Ms. Wagner to bring us up the date on this.
Good evening Chairman and planning commission members and welcome to our new members. This agenda item is a staff initiated request for a zoning map amendment to have a property designated as industrial development. The property is located at 951 Carolina Drive. The property consists of 172 acres and it's zoned rural preservation. The property is owned by Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority. It's known as their Cherry Point Reclamation Facility where the sewer is collected and treated. In accordance with Article 6 of the Jasper County Zoning Ordinance, collection of sewage is allowed in the RP zoning district. The facility, however, the treatment of the sewage is not allowed in the rural preservation district. The facility was originally constructed around 1997 and 1998 and therefore it's considered a legal non-conforming use. Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority submitted a major site plan application to expand the facility. They're looking to expand the equalization tank and also their overall facility in order to meet their growth demands in this area and the projected development forecast. During the site plan review, staff realized property use was a legal non-conforming use in accordance with Article 9 of the Jasper County Zoning Ordinance. Legal non-conformities are uses, structures, lots, or developed site improvements that do not conform to one or more provisions or requirements of the zoning ordinance but were lawfully established prior to the effective date of the current zoning ordinance or amendments thereto, or those approved by the planning commission through Article 9 colon 3 dot 7, number 2. While Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority could provide a business plan and ask the planning commission to approve their expansion, the use would still be non-conforming and Jasper County believes it's in the best interest of Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority and the county to have the property rezoned to industrial development, bringing the property, the use of the property into compliance with the county zoning ordinance. This property will never be developed for any other reason than a sewage collection and treatment facility with the exception of accessory uses that support the facility. And furthermore, the facility has been operating as an industrial use for 25 years. The zoning map amendment application request is reviewed by considering the comprehensive plan and according to the 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as an urban transition area. These areas are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by either the city of Hardyville or the town of Ridgeland. In many instances, these areas were already developed as the municipalities expanded their municipal boundaries through annexation. For areas that experienced new development or redevelopment within the urban transition zones, considerations should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. As far as the adjacent zoning, the parcel, the adjacent parcels are zoned industrial development, general commercial, rural preservation, and the municipal limits of Hardyville. The adjacent land uses are a mix of both industrial and commercial uses. To the north, I'm gonna put up the zoning layer real quick. I have it right here. This is the overall property, the 172 acres. This is Argent, this is Shortcut Road, and this is Jasper Station Road and Carolina Drive. So this is their site. This is the zoning map. This hash colored red is the municipal limits. This other bright red is general commercial, which is in the county, and this purple is industrial development. I know the label show an ID, NRP, but it's industrial development, which is the ID. So as far as the adjacent land uses, to the north is a planned development district through the city of Hardyville, which includes a new residential subdivision. That's this area right here. To the east is a commercial subdivision known as the Cherry Point Business Park, which contains a variety of general commercial uses. To the south are two concrete plants and a waste management facility and undeveloped forested property. To the west is undeveloped forested property. The subject property is accessed by Carolina Drive and Jasper Station Road. Carolina Drive is a local road maintained by Jasper County. Jasper Station Road is a local road maintained by South Carolina DOT. Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer is an essential utility provider serving Jasper County, its citizens, and property owners. The property's been used as industrial for 25 years and is adjacent to other industrial and commercial land uses. The Jasper County Comprehensive Plan does not give any other guidance within the urban transition area aside from annexation. So based on the adjacent zoning and adjacent land uses, the rezoning request is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area and it will not create a negative or adverse impact on the community. For these reasons, staff recommends approval to have the property designated as industrial development.
Okay, you representing this as staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Dr. Butler, any questions?
The residential community to the north of this property, what's the name of that development?
Of Harstone Lakes, that's this here.
Yeah.
And this along, right along the road, I don't believe that used to be on our Q Publix and, you know, Hardyville really doesn't let us know. So it appears they have something planned, whether it's just an expansion of Harstone Lakes, I'm not sure.
Does, and I don't know if you know this or not, but well, does Beaufort Jasper notify these residents of expansions? I mean, and the reason for my question in regard to that is I live near a site like this and I can tell you the smell associated with that is not always pleasant. And I just want to make sure that, I understand that they provide an important service, but at the same time, they have
So, you know, when that community was created, Beaufort Jasper, Beaufort Jasper was the first one out there. Whether Hardyville let them know that that facility's there, but in order to serve them, and Arja East Track that Hardyville's permitting, I mean, this is needed. If not, they're gonna have to start saying, no, we can't provide these developments with sewer. So I don't know the answer to that. I know we'll go through a public hearing and we'll notify. People that are within a thousand feet of here of
Even though they're in the city, it doesn't matter?
No, we'll notify them.
Okay, so they'll have an opportunity to express?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that was really my main concern, that the people have an opportunity to speak and they will.
Yes, ma'am, they will.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins? I just, Lisa, for this, for this expansion, do we require any kind of state inspection, like pollution study or?
They're going
Do DHEC have to come in and do some kind of inspection?
So they're going through a major site plan application right now. As you know, when they have an engineer they've hired, it's Black and Beach, who's going through, doing all this stuff. They do have to get their DHEC permits. They need approval for this type of facility to operate from DHEC. They need wastewater permits. They need land disturbance permits in this case. They need stormwater permits, all that from DHEC. At the same time, they have to meet the county's land development regulations. We have our own stormwater ordinance, which is a little above and beyond DHEC. So they have to meet DHEC, but they also have to meet the county's. And Jasper County, we have a Thomason Hutton, we have other engineers that we can use to do the plan reviews, but right now Thomason Hutton is reviewing their submittal from their engineer on behalf of Jasper County.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes, any questions, comment?
That one answered.
Okay.
I'm assuming the zoning application has to happen first as any new development does.
So actually, they were already submitted and going through the process when we realized, you know, that there could be a zoning issue. I mean, they're legally non-conforming, but according to ordinance, in order for them to expand, they either come to the planning commission and can ask you to grant that expansion, just that sole use. But the county, you know, 25 years from now as the county continues to grow, there may be a need to expand it even further. So that's why we want to go ahead and see them get industrial development. That's all this site will be used for. It's never gonna be developed or sold for other types of development.
Because they have a path forward either way, if it's a non-conforming use or whether this rezoning is granted.
Yes.
Is there anything changing this to industrial development use that would take some control off of zoning the planning commission, the building department? Or, because it's easy for somebody to say, hey, we're never gonna develop it until you get the zoning and then later on it happens.
Well, I mean, that's what we do see. So when we rezoned, the countywide rezoning in 2007, we wanted to make everything that was 25 acres and greater was zoned rural preservation. That's how they came, that's how they got into zoning. If you were a developer coming to us tonight, we certainly would not recommend your property be rezoned to anything but a planned development district, especially if it's 172 acres. Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority is a great partner with Jasper County and in turn, we try to partner with them and we support one another. There's no intention, the county's 100% confident, this property is not gonna be sold and flipped, you know, to a developer to come in and develop. Beaufort Jasper has their own master plan. This is included in their master plan. There's been a preliminary engineering report on the whole entire 172 acres. What you might see come here, maybe some solar panels that support their equipment. It'll be just accessory uses. We're totally confident in that. Again, we would not recommend this rezoning for a developer. We would want them to come in as a planned development district.
Okay, any other question? Dr. Boss?
Ms. Butler was talking about residential that's near this, this rezoning. When we look at Argent Boulevard, these are, it says community commercial, but most of these are, there are no homes in here. They're just businesses.
That's right.
They're just the same little apartment, I'm thinking of that.
Here on Jasper, there's nothing there either. I sent y'all the Google map. I did that for a reason. I have it here. I think I opened it. Maybe I didn't open it. I had gotten the Google Earth map. So as you can see, all of this along Jasper Station Road is undeveloped. Like I said, this, this layout with these roads, it just showed up on our Q Publix recently. So whether that's a plan to expand this or whether it's a commercial or damn, I don't know what it is. But right now it's all woods. And over here is all woods. This is recently, to the, to the west there, where this cursor is, that's recently been annexed into Hardyville, so I'm not aware of
But right here on Argent, on Argent Boulevard and Shortcut Road, these are all small.
To the rear, all of that is, that's the Cherry Point Business Center. There's all kind of uses in there, the Napa Auto Parts, maybe some doctor offices. There's a flooring business. Murdochs Rentals is there along Argent.
Right now, what they're, it looks like it's all isolated on the, on a different end.
Yeah.
Are they gonna be expanding? How much, how much more area they're gonna be expanding into that hole?
So this, this is their property. It comes up to the back here. But no, they're not expanding. What they're proposing to do right now is only going to disturb 23.9 acres.
Okay.
So it's 23 additional acres.
Right now?
Yeah.
But later on, it could expand and take much more of that property and, and become more of a, it's not a nuisance, but like Dr. Butler said about the air quality, things like that, I think
So there's no immediate plans to do any expansion, you know, but in 25 years, could that change? It could change. I do know they have an interest in doing some solar panels, just to, that would not be put out into the market like the solar farm, but to support their equipment and like when you have a loss of power.
Okay, you said right now they collect, but they don't process?
No, they collect and treat.
And treat.
Yes. This is their main
And you hadn't had any
Waste treatment.
You hadn't had any problems with any of their neighbors at this point?
No, sir.
I know you're saying it's a necessity, but I'm just concerned about that. How big that operation can get and will it become a problem? Once we rezone it?
So although they're not a public facility, they also operate under public utilities and so again, they have their own master plan as well. We have a copy of that that we've gotten during the submittal. So what's in that master plan right now is just for this particular expansion that will include the equalization tank and an expansion to their facility to support it and it's gonna be an impact of 23.9 acres in addition to what's there. You know, they've had to expand their water treatment plant on the Piersburg River, but I mean, it's a part of growth and demand and being able to keep up with it. You can't get water and sewer from any other agency here in Jasper County. Instead of town of Ridgeland, sorry about that.
All the growth and building in that area, I just see them continuing, continuing, continuing to expand, just like we're continuing, continuing to build. And it's gonna probably cause some problems, but we hadn't put the rezoning maps out yet, the signs out yet, are they out?
Not yet. We have not. Again, when this boards to the county council, we will we'll send notices out, we'll put signs out, we'll have an ad in the paper, and we'll notify everybody within a thousand feet.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Gramlin.
Gramlin.
Gramlin, good opportunity. Questions to come?
The only thing I have, I've got a couple questions. If they were to build, as you can see on the north side of the map, right above the transmission power line there, they have a buffer. I'm wondering if they would try to retain a buffer throughout so we don't have to see it from the highway?
Yes, they've kept that one very well buffered. There will be a buffer requirement along the road. The Jasper Station Road is the road you're referring to, yeah. There will, they will need to keep some buffer there and I feel certain that they're, I think they've been really good neighbors and they will, you know, we could even ask them to please make sure, maybe an additional buffer stays in place, but there is a requirement for a smaller buffer.
The other thing is the wetlands here, I was just curious about that as well. I'm assuming that this flows to the Cogan River. Just wanna make sure that we're not gonna stop any water flow and make sure everything's still gonna
No, they're not. And so they'll have to, if they impact any wetlands, they'll, and they've already, they've already done some work. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to answer that tonight, but I don't know if it's a non-jurisdictional or a jurisdictional wetland, but they have to get permits from the appropriate agency. So if it's jurisdictional, it's the US Army Corps and if it's non-jurisdictional, it's OCRM. So they've already been doing all that. They're also in an unnumbered A zone. They've had to do a flood study to, they have to build to the 500 year flood instead of the 100 year flood because they are a community facility. That's a requirement of the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. So that work has already been done. So that work has already been done, and it will be properly permitted through the correct agency for any impact to wetlands. Their stormwater will be looked at by the state and by Jasper County, and they can't create any, um, additional runoff off, off of their site, uh, upstream or downstream.
Uh, also, I don't know, I'm sure they've got engineers and stuff that'll figure all these numbers, and they'll probably be in touch with the, um, the power provider, but also the load on the line. Um, just wondered what kind of equipment they're going to be using over there? How much would it actually take to, to get them up and running essentially? Because I know, I know that this, this line here that you're being fed from is overloaded now, currently. So that's why, another thing I was curious about as well.
So they'll coordinate, um, I don't know if that's Dominion or Palmetto, but they'll have to coordinate with them. Um, their plan now is, if, if you're familiar with the site and been out there and you see the big, big, uh, concrete tanks, they're planning on adding one of those. Um, then there will be later next year, that's their first thing, they're going to come in and just add this big tank. Um, then next year, toward the end part of the year, they'll make upgrades and, um, not a large expansion, but expand the actual facility that's there for the workers. They don't plan to increase any of their, uh, traffic or truck volumes. Um, and as far as the electric line, they will have to work that out with the power company.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a couple of questions, Ms. Wagner.
Yes.
Um, if you don't know, uh, in that one hundred and seventy-two acres approximately, how much wetlands is, is in, in it?
Um, I didn't make that map, uh, uh, that was not. It's in this paperwork, hold us.
If you can't find it, I could, I could look into that.
We have this map here, we've done this, this is the layer we have. It's from the, um, the National Wetland Inventory, and it's a very old layer. Very old layer. So you have to go through a wetlands delineation when you do a commercial site plan. Just because we can't, um, nobody can really put all their eggs in a basket depending on this data. But this is what it's showing, it's showing some wetlands here, some here, some here, and then here. Now, if you take that wetland layer off, and just looking at what you see here, you can pretty much, I'm sure Mr. Gramlin was talking about this there, right here, by looks of the aerial map, it pretty much looks like this is your wetland here and over here. Um, if you're just looking at the type of vegetation and the way they show up from these aerial views.
So when we went back to review property that was improperly zoned, this one we missed because when they started, they had ID. And if we had looked at it carefully, we wouldn't have zoned this rural preservation due to that twenty-five acre.
That's right. Yeah, and you know, we used a consultant, so we weren't hands-on with that countywide rezoning. We had ATM who did all the zoning maps for us, and just anything over twenty-five acres, they rezoned to rural preservation. But had we been more involved and been more hands-on, I think we would have determined this one doesn't need to be rural preservation because it's a waste treatment facility.
And all the potential growth that is in that area without the rezoning and they being able to expand would put bricks on a lot of things in that area for Hardyville and, and rural Jasper.
Yes.
Okay, is any other question for any of the other commissioners at this time?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Buck.
Um, is this the only, um, treatment plant serving that area?
It's the only major treatment plant, yes, serving this area. As far as I know, it's the only major treatment plant serving Jasper County. And I say major, there is, um, a much smaller, well, I don't know if that's sewer. I think that's just water up in Point South, and then like in Hardyville Round Church Road and out at Pure, they have the small, you know, some.
They upgraded that a couple of years ago.
Some grinder pump stations and different things like that, but.
So does this serve Beaufort County too? Does it serve Sun City?
Yes.
So that entire area is handled by this little plant here?
Well, there might be additional plants, there could be a smaller system maybe in Sun City for all I know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I was just curious about the extent to which this was going to be serving.
But this is the main facility for that.
Uh, one other question.
Yes.
And you said the staff took it upon themselves because you realized the need to present this, so there was no need for Beaufort-Jasper Water to come to us?
Right, I mean, we did make them aware of it. It was just, they're, they've been working towards this expansion for a long time. Like I said, they had a flood study done, they had to go determine what the five-hundred-year base flood elevation was. Um, so it's, they've been at it a while, and we just knew that would really slow things down. Again, the project was already in review, so.
It's a, it's a legally non-conforming, so they could not have expanded or done anything without getting it rezoned.
Right, and we can't really give them a permit. We have allowed the reviews to continue. But, so what we did when we did the first major review, when we had all the comments, that was one of the comments. And this is what we were like, we all got together and talked about it, and thought the best path forward in this case was to rezonate. We did it so just as to kind of try to keep the project going without slowing them down and going through some extra things for them to do.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm ready to entertain a motion for a recommendation on rezoning to industrial.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Commissioner Jenkins, offer a motion that we approve the staff recommendation, recommendation on tax map number oh-six-seven-zero-zero-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-three, approval for industrial development.
A motion for Mr. Jenkins, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Jenkins, recommending that we grant, um, industrial development on tax map number zero-six-seven-zero-zero-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-three, seconded by Dr. Buck. Ready for questioning? Hear none, all in favor, let it known by a same eye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side. Hear none, most carried, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda this evening is the approval of the twenty-four planning commissioner's schedule. There's a copy in your package, you can look at it, and Ms. Wagner can tell us she got some things highlighted and everything. We know if time changed, subject that we may have to make some changes. Uh, yeah, this is tentative schedule for us for twenty-four.
That's very true.
Um, Mr. Chairman, we're in new business, right?
Yeah.
Um, can I ask Lisa a question, please? Before we, before we go into the, uh, approval of our, um, calendar for twenty-twenty-four, Lisa, on Highway four-sixty-two, I believe, s- s- somebody asked this question before. On four-sixty-two, just before you get.
Oh, Mr. Jenkins, let's go ahead and do this.
Oh, good.
And we get an open, open discussion.
Right, that's what I meant, thank you, yeah, thank you.
So Chairman, I just highlighted the primary election day that did conflict with our second Tuesday of the month. And if, um, it suits the planning commissioner's schedule, we would propose June eighteenth and change the semittal deadline a week beyond May twenty-first to May twenty-eighth. And then the next meeting would be July four, uh, July ninth, which is just so close to the July fourth holiday. But, um, most of our meetings are four weeks apart. There's a few times a year they're five weeks apart. So staff would propose just, uh, taking the July ninth meeting because of July fourth, and it only being three weeks away, if y'all approve June eighteenth. Would like to move that one to, um, well, uh, to July sixteenth, which would be four weeks from June eighteenth, if you approve it. Those are the only, uh, changes that the staff proposes.
So let me, oh, I'm sorry.
Is any question for any permission on the scheduling date? Mr. Jenkins?
Um, so that mean we'll have a meeting in June, if you do it in July?
We would meet, um, it would just be June eighteenth instead of June eleventh, because June eleventh is going to be our primary election day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any, anyone else have a question? I'm ready to entertain a motion on our schedule for twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the schedule that has been presented to us for twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
A motion made by Dr. Boss, seconded by Dr. Buck, ready for questions? Hear none, all in favor of such motion, let it known by a same eye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? Hear none, most carried, unanimous.
Thank you.
Uh, open discussion, eight. And Mr. Jenkins, you was acting something?
Yeah, listen, on, on four-sixty-two, just before you get to that, um, before you get to Boil and Hall Road, I think we asked, there's a dirt road there, and a lot of big trucks are going through that dirt road back up in that hole. What's going on back there?
Coming from Richland, before you get rolling home.
Before you get to landscaping business, there's a dirt road in there, a lot of big trucks are going back in the bushes.
On the right-hand side? That is, um, uh, a Cleveland facility, um, where they're, I think they dump landscaping type of materials and. It's been there for a number, number of years.
Yeah, because, you know, my only concern, there's no stop sign there, those trucks are in.
Well, there used to be a stop sign, only when you're coming off of the site. I can remember when they cleared that out, you know, I didn't know that existed for a long time, it stayed so good. Really?
Yeah, and you know, and that's, that's not the first one either, and, um.
And I noticed the stop signs not there, out of their facility.
I meant, these are huge, I meant, who have control over that, do anybody?
Well, I mean, it's an encroachment onto the South Carolina DOT road, Highway four-sixty-two. They would have approved that, that ease, that, um, egress and, um, ingress and egress there, you know, from four-sixty-two onto the property.
I'm just concerned with what they dumping back there, they're not the bushes, you can't, is somebody policing it to see what they're putting back there? Or is the county, who's, who's this county or the state or who?
They're probably operating under a South Carolina permit. Um, I'd really have to check into that, that's been there, first time I ever became aware of it. It had been there for years already, so, um.
They actually even have housing, there's like a little housing development that's like their own, I saw on G I S a week ago.
In there?
Well, I know they have an, an office there, but, um, yeah, so.
Structures that look like little cottages.
Because of so much bushes, the only thing you can see is big trucks going in and out, you can't see nothing else. And it, it's dangerous, and you're right, that's not the first truck I've.
Clearly this morning, they had to divert interstate around because that truck was turned over blocking through traffic both around at nine.
And I meant, these are big trucks.
My wife was shut down for two hours.
Oh, yeah?
Two hours she sat in traffic.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's dangerous, I meant, those trucks, that sometime they are even right on out, they don't.
Well, Lisa, if they're going in and out there, uh, how do we know they're not, what they're doing back there, and they're not expanding their operation?
Well, I mean, I've looked at it on G I S too, and, uh, we haven't gotten any complaints, I mean.
There's nobody out there.
We, we only have like two people in the office during the day to run out and see about all of these things. So it's, you know, it's just, I guess we're going to have to hire some more people. But we do respond to complaints, we just don't really go around, we don't have the staff we need in our office to go around policing every single.
Well, we know it's a hazard now, from what we've heard here from your commissioners, and who else probably has the same concern. So you have some complaints now, and maybe we can't do it, but.
I mean, we don't even have an inspector in our office tomorrow, they're at conferences, it's just her and I.
But we have a county council person here with us.
Yeah.
He's listing and taking all these notes.
We can, but I do know if you're, if you're, um, putting out any type of landscaping equipment, if you're, um, dumping, you know, you have to have a de-hec permit. And that probably be the easiest thing for us to do is call, but I would feel certain that's in place as long as they've been there.
Yeah, but if, but if you had that site for a certain period of time, and you kept expanding and expanding and expanding, uh, then that, that doesn't get to the point where it's non-conforming once.
It depends if it was properly permitted for the site, I mean, were there buffer yards, um, it's something we'll have to look into, I mean.
Yeah.
We weren't prepared to, didn't look that up, and can't really sit here and answer those questions.
They should have a business license, right? So we should have some information about what they are allowed to do on that property based on the license that was granted?
Yeah, we don't have access to a business license, but we could put in a request and see what.
Really, you can't just like pick up the phone? No?
My, my concern is just safety, it, it's.
We can try that, but there's only one person in that department, so you don't always get anybody to answer.
I'm just concerned about safety, and it's, it's becoming a safety hazard, and those, those are not small trucks, those are big trucks.
I know, you know, I live off of Glover Road in Mildenhall, and I was coming to work this morning, there's a mining operation that's annexed into the town. They keep that road tore up, God forbid if you hit the hole, you might think you knocked the whole bottom off your car. There's nothing but dirt, they take all the concrete out with them, so many trucks turn out there. But y'all this morning, I mean, I couldn't have been more than two-hundred feet from, and the guy just, he never even stopped. He just came right out and pulled on to the road, and I was like, oh my God, I went around him and.
And that's in the town, the Hardyville?
That's in Richland. I live in the county, out there by D.P. Lauthard Farm, you know.
Go to their town meeting, council meeting.
And, uh, but there's that mining operation. And it probably backs up all the way, I don't know where exactly they mine, but that goes up there where that solar farm is, that goes behind Graham Hall and.
You know, I was talking to Mr. Jenkins one time, and there is, I was looking up information on the D H E C website regarding mining locations in Jasper County, and there is a map on the D H E C website.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's accurate or not, but we were talking about whether or not there are unpermitted mining operations going on.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any unpermitted ones, there could be, but I'm not aware. There was up at Rivers Hill, there was that one, and those people came to the, um, county. But, um, there were several, I don't know if you remember, and that's the problem with mining operations, these big tracks, they last twenty and thirty years. These big tracks, they last 20 and 30 years. But, um, gosh, when I came to work here in 1999, there were mining operations being permitted all the time. There was a different process, and they went through the, um, Board of Zoning Appeals as a special exception. There were several in the Bellinger Hill area and some others kind of all throughout the county. And so we have a lot of mining operations from years back. I think like in the last 10 or 12 years, we've only approved two that I can think of. And that was, um, the Lanyard Development on Bellinger Hill Road and, um, Mr. Bryan's, that fish pond out there. We've had the request from the guy, y'all saw that last year up in, um, or maybe earlier this year, up in Gillisenville. But that still hasn't been finally approved yet. But we are getting requests almost every day. So I think you're going to have some applications coming your way. And as a staff member, we have to take those applications and process them and give them a fair, uh, process to submit these requests to y'all.
As long as the zoning is appropriate, do they need to come through the planning commission?
If you want to do a mining, yep. If you want to do a mining operation, you have to rezone to resource extraction. Yes, ma'am.
But that fight with Gillisenville is still before the county, right?
That's still at the county council level. Yeah.
Is that the one with the huge lake that they were going to put three houses on?
Well, no, that one was the five acre. The huge lake was the Lanyard Development down in Hardyville. But this last one was the five acres up in Gillisenville. The young man said he wanted to do the fish pond.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, I just, I just, Mr. Chairman, am I in order?
Yeah.
Just a minute, just a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, you know, I, you know, I sit on this commission. I don't want nobody to think that I am against growth. But you know, we, we don't have to wake up because there's a lot of stuff coming our way. And I realize, you know, we got people that live there, used to do things 40, 50, 60 years ago. And there will have to be changes in order to, for us to be doing the right thing to protect our citizen, make sure they're safe, make sure that nobody get hurt. But there's a, there's a lot of stuff we gonna have to move fast on because it's coming so fast. So if we don't do something, then we gonna, we gonna be left holding the bag and probably some lawsuits.
I think we already are.
Yeah, it needs to start at the staff level.
Right.
Because even Hardyville can not sustain, they got to have funding for no new construction. That's affecting all of it. I'm an architect.
That's right.
I'm obviously pro development, smart development within guidelines and rules that we have.
That's right.
Um, and we, I'm in the 462, I'm partial to that because I got four little boys that are going to be driving that road. So we gotta be smart. This is definitely valid.
Yeah.
When is the moratorium coming off?
The moratorium is scheduled to end if all goes well. And if we can lift the moratorium as planned, it'll be then to March, toward then to March of 2024. And, uh, some of that's, we've only had one community meeting. And, um, then we did have the educational trip that y'all were invited to go on. Um, we're going to have a focus group meeting next week, just a small, just the one group. We'll be, just the staff and the consultant will be meeting with the key, uh, Chelsea Rule. But that'll be coming to y'all. Hopefully we'll be able to schedule a workshop in January. That's kind of what we're hoping for anyway. And maybe it'll be a workshop with y'all in the council, but definitely, um, I talked to her about trying to get that workshop scheduled with planning commission.
That's what the problem is, I am.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I would like to let you know, um, that Ms. Ferguson, her husband is sick. And, um, I told her we would keep her and her husband in prayer. So I would ask Skita, uh, when you say your prayers, please lift them up.
Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson's another one of our planning commissioner, me, commission members, and that's why she's not here tonight. Because of her husband, um, he's under the weather and he's ill. I'd also like to point out Mr. Wade is in the audience, and I know he would like to speak to you before you close out.
I had a, I had a couple of things. Well, I mean, hold on before you speak, Mr. Wade. Um, Councilman Kemp, like to say anything?
No.
Always nice to have you.
Okay, um, Mr. Kemp is, you know, he le- left us all of a sudden, uh, before he come up. This, my recommendation, and, uh, Mr. Kemp can deal with this. He was a lawyer member for many years on this commission. I would ask that the Capitol recognize in some special way for his lawyer's service to this board.
That's right, yeah. I just told Lisa that I just wanted to, um, say my goodbyes, basically, because I, I really don't get to see any of you all, you know, out and about in normal business and, and normal life. I just don't get to see you very often. And I just wanted to actually come up and say my goodbyes and let you know how much I appreciate you all letting me serve on the commission. Um, it's been an honor to serve with each of you. Um, I know that each of you have the best interests of Jasper County in mind. And I would say I'm so grateful to see some younger blood coming into the, uh, commission because that's what we need. We need younger, uh, people. I mean, I'm, I'm getting up in age as well as a number of the other members. And it's good to see some young blood, and I'm glad to see you all take on the initiative to, to serve on the commission. So that's all I wanted to say. And again, I just wanted to say what an honor it's been to serve on the commission.
And as Chairman, I thank you for the camaraderie we had, and thank you so very much for the service. Because I mean, I know you used to always research everything we had in detail.
Yes.
And it was a blessing to the county.
Thank you.
Any commissions have anything?
I would just like to say I, I pray God would bless you in whatever your endeavor is and that he keeps you in good health, that you and your family be blessed. And I was honored to sit next to you because not only it was an honor, but you taught me a lot of stuff. And I thank you for that, and I pray God bless and cover you and his, your family in his blood and keep you safe and Merry Christmas. Thank you. Thank you.
And I have to agree with that. I learned a lot, um, in my short time with you. Um, but I'm really disappointed because you always took very good and careful note of minutes. On all the steps.
Oh, yeah, you did.
I don't know who's going to fill those shoes.
Well, thank you. Thank you all. And thank you for your kind words. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Merry Christmas.
Before you leave, how many years did you serve?
I really don't know, Dr. Bostick. I would say probably what's, I would say seven to 10 years on.
Yeah, pretty close.
Because I was on.
You was on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, that's right. I, I, I served on the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals. I served, served on the planning commission for the town of Bridgeland, uh, before sitting here. And then I served also on the joint planning commission.
Yeah.
Uh, I was on that. So I mean, I've probably been serving for, oh, probably close to 20 years.
Oh, great, great.
In some way.
And I would say on the planning commission, I'm thinking about eight years now that I do the math in my head, and I'm not good with time.
Yeah, I, I really don't remember what year I actually came on board.
It could be 10, 12 years.
Yeah, I mean, I had, I have no idea. Time just flies by.
Well, we just want to thank you for your time.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you all.
If there are no other questions coming, I'll entertain a motion that we stand adjourned.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, a motion made that we stand adjourned. All in favor of such motion, let it known by a same eye. We now stand adjourned to our next schedule.